Okay, first up, we have Terry from the Health Department.
Morning.
I talked to the council last week about the nurses malpractice insurance. And they thought it was a good idea for the county to pay it. But wondered how you felt about either just having her pay it every year and then turn in a claim? Or have it go on the county's policy? And so she did turn in a claim last week to have it paid. Thought it might be cheaper if she just goes ahead and keeps it on her own policy and then turns in a claim. Rather than to have the county have it put on their policy, but that's up to you.
I think what we got back from Kyle, that that was probably the path to go. To reimburse her.
Okay.
And there's some situation she may get out of the realm of what the county duties are. And then that would be a situation that we wouldn't want.
Okay, yeah.
Kyle, you got a comment?
Only for the county, yes. And it does say in her job description, in order for her to be the public health nurse, that she had to have malpractice insurance. And when we did have our COVID clinics, we did not let any nurses give shots if they did not also have obviously their license, updated license and their own malpractice. Just to make sure that everyone was covered there, but. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I just have one more thing I wanted to bring up real quick. As you guys have probably heard, you know, that the governor's been going around and he's been having the last year and a half, he's been talking about the governor's health commission and they've gone around and they've invited us all to go and say what what could happen, what could be better, what they can do to make public health better. And we've been able to go around the district and speak and ask what we think could happen in the future. Well, now they've come out with all these answers and all these ideas to make public health better. And at your convenience, you can look through this, but some of the things that they are going to be doing, it looks like is they're going to push toward making things more district rather than just county. It looks like they're pushing toward district health officers, district administrators and those type of things. But they're going to be coming up with a lot of money. And they're going to be pushing that through the local health maintenance fund and the local health department trust account, which we get anyway. We get thirty-three thousand, one thirty-nine a year through local health maintenance. And about between twelve and fourteen thousand dollars a year through the, through the trust account. They're going to push those up greatly, like I know Stark County health nurse just talked to them last week and they can get up to six hundred thousand. And it's according to your, your county population, so ours wouldn't be near that much, but ours would be I don't know, three hundred and fifty thousand, maybe close to four hundred thousand. But you commissioners would have to agree, this will be something you would decide on by next November, whether or not we agree to do that. And if you agree to go along with what the state wants, there are certain jobs in here that the health department will have to do, which we do a lot of those now, but you know, there's only three of us. So that would mean hiring a couple more people to fill those positions, but the state would have the money there available to do that. It's pushing out more public health is what it's, it's doing. It's trying to enhance things that we aren't doing now, a lot more programs that obviously we're not doing those programs now because the county is choosing to pay our salaries out of the grant money, so we can't use that money for programs. But look through it at your convenience, ask us questions and I'll be sending you emails. The governor's going to want you to watch videos and the state health commissioner will want you to watch videos about how this is going to play out and how it can help the counties and how things are going to start to change through the next few years. But they're going to want a decision from the commissioners by next November, I think, so that it can start coming into effect on January of two thousand and twenty-four. So it's really going to start being big changes now, I think. They've made a lot of different decisions. And so I could say a lot of things, they've been pushing toward a credibility, you know, getting every county to do accreditation. And that means you have to do a lot of certain things that obviously the small counties have not done because we don't have the people to do that. And it's going to be everybody doing the same thing throughout the state, everybody being on the same page, doing the same thing. And making sure it gets done the correct way and the same way. So like I say, look through it, any questions? I don't know that I can answer them, but I can try or I can find out someone who can answer them for me. Okay, you'll be getting a lot more information about this in.
So we do assume the money would come in every year?
Yes, and yes.
Not just a one time?
Oh, no, it's like a five year plan at a time, I believe. Like I say, and they're talking district health officers, obviously there'd be county health officers, but they'd answer to the district. We already have it, or it would be regional, I guess they would say, there'd be three regions, northern, middle and southern. But then we still have this ten districts in the state of Indiana, as you know, we're part of District Two, the seven counties here. And there would be five districts that would answer to one regional health officer. I assume would be from a big county like Saint Joe or something like that. They're just trying to streamline everything, it sounds like, and making sure we're all doing.
Okay, thank you, Terry.
Read it over when you have time, thank you.
Yeah, the other item of business for Health Department was the ordinance revised the Plaski County Health Department fees schedule. Do this up and we covered the increases, I think, at our last meeting. So we would need a motion to approve this ordinance.
Ah, so moved.
Doc.
Any other discussion? I don't see a number for the ordinance.
Oh.
Do we need a? Hold in, Lee. Any other discussion on the ordinance? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. We run twice, Laura before. Once it's run twice, then it's effective. Yeah, good idea. A good idea.
Okay, Judge Coker.
Morning. My primary purpose this morning for being here is that we need to, or you all need to appoint someone to public defender board. We are part of, part of the reimbursement program here in Plaski County, which is run by the commission or council. They require as part of that program that we maintain a board of three individuals. It's an appointment by the judges, there's an appointment by the council and then commissioners. Currently, Mr. McClure serves as our member on the board appointed by the commissioners. So that is something that I need to have done before that we can.
Oh, Mike, are you willing to continue to serve?
About to.
Very good, thank you.
I, I would appoint Mike Public Defender Board.
Yeah, I would second that. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. The only other thing I wanted to do this morning was just to give you all some updates. I haven't seen you all for a while, so I wanted to give you some updates about things going on in Superior Court. We are getting ready for our recertification for our Veterans Treatment Court, so we've been in operation for that right after the first of the year. We received our grant, obviously, for the pretrial release program, which is Ms. Ruff, that pays salary and benefits. And she works then out of the probation office, which helps because she can help run or write pre-sentence reports that are necessary. I am currently in the process of writing a grant for our interpreter. So we use an interpreter and this year it was interesting, we had Spanish, Polish, Burmese, Hahachin and ASL. So you'd be surprised at how many different languages that come through that we require an interpreter for. So we so far have been able to grant fund that. In addition, we, Dr. Tucker and I just recently wrote a grant for what we call a navigator. And we're very excited about that because we have received for the last three years funding from the opioid addiction grant of sixty thousand dollars a year, which we just received an award for that grant as well for this two thousand and twenty-three, so we're excited about that. So once we received that award, we wrote a grant for what we call a navigator. And that navigator would actually be somebody who's available to anyone in the and the purpose of that navigator would be for any individual, community involved in the justice system, either court, who needs help with addiction and treatment or mental health treatment. They could come to this individual who will be well versed in all the programming that's available to them, where they might be able to go, inpatient programs, who they can connect them with for treatment. So we're really excited about that and we're hoping to receive that funding. It will also reduce the amount of funding that we have to use out of the opioid addiction grant for the individual who has to try to navigate all of that on their own. So that's a grant that we're hoping to use back on soon. And that's essentially all we have going on, other than all day. So any questions about anything that we're doing currently?
Would the grant completely cover the expenses with the person?
It would, yes, it would just be a contracted, part-time position, where they would just be doing the connections to rehabilitation, addiction and health services.
So it's on an as needed basis?
Correct. Anything else?
Anything else, Judge?
Only other thing I wanted to say, we are having a Veterans Treatment Court advise, community advisory meeting on Monday, December fifth. Want to invite anybody who would like to come along to that. That's important for us because we want to get input from community members, mission counselors, anybody who has information that they'd like to share or questions they want to ask. So December five, starting at ten o'clock in Superior Court.
Where's it at?
Superior Court.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Sue.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm here and I need to have signed an addition to our DocSPOD agreement that we had signed. It's, we've had it signed back in September of two thousand and fourteen. So I was going to give you just a little information of exactly what DocSPOD is. Original agreement. And what it is, is it's a search engine that users can use. It's an app that they can go into online and they're able to search our properties and any information they need. It's mostly used by title searchers, AppStar companies and genealogists use it also. Yeah, and they charge, they'll give copies to the public, you know, as, but they have to pay DocSPOD. And in return, DocSPOD pays us, the Recorder's Office, for our required amount that we need to, a dollar a page. So we get checks from them. It's no cost to the county, but we get, we see money weekly from DocSPOD for the copies that they sell online. They don't have access, direct access to our computers, so it's no threat to our security as far as they buy it from our software, or not buy it, but they get it, an updated version, version, right? So what this is, is that they also have what they call a property watch. And this will allow users to buy from them, they would pay them so that anything that transpires are on their property, the buyer or the landowner will be notified that this, something's taking place on their property. Now, this is, I've had one person so far ask me if we, we had that and at the time, you know, we didn't. But this is what DocSPOD is offering now. And they buy it from DocSPOD, we don't do it, we don't do the search for it or provide them the information. It's strictly through DocSPOD that does it. But they need permission to change the original agreement, allowing them to do this. So that's basically what this, what they're asking on this agreement and they need the commissioner's signature in mind as well.
Okay. Any other questions? Fine, Kevin.
Did you get the copy I emailed to Kevin?
I'll have to remember, I don't know if I'm sure when you.
I emailed it the same day I put in for the appointment.
Simple agreement.
Okay, we would need a motion to approve the addendum regarding the property watch.
All moved. Okay.
Been moved and seconded, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Okay, we're down to other business. Approving and signing of the claims and payroll number twenty-three.
I have reviewed all the claims, payroll twenty-three, and I make a motion to approve as presented. All seconded.
Okay, been moved and seconded, any other discussion, payrolls and claims? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And approve and sign the minutes of our November seventh regular meeting?
Yes, I reviewed those minutes, make a motion to approve as presented. All seconded.
Moved and seconded, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye, upon the approval of the minutes.
Aye.
And now we're down to the approval of the contractual services agreement with the Purdue. Have a representative here. I think this is probably an annual duty sent to us, copies mailed to us. Guess we'd need a motion to approve contractual service agreement with Purdue for our
So moved. Okay.
Moved and seconded, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we need to approve and sign the two thousand and twenty-three base scale, scale schedule. First pay beginning on twelve twenty-eight of twenty-two and the last one on twelve thirteen. Free, get a motion to approve the base schedule.
All moved. Okay.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we have approve and sign over the corner with Jennifer Johns, our public facial bond. Bounded for thirty thousand dollars. Motion to approve the bond.
All moved.
Moved and seconded, any other discussion? Corner bond. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the other thing, we have approval of Steve Shank appointment to the Monterey Yipikenu Public Library Board.
I would make that motion. Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any other discussion? Steve Shank. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Terry, did you have something for us, it's not on the agenda?
Well, good morning, I, I had talked with Mike Reese and I left Chuck a message, but didn't get back with me. We ran across a grader that definitely ours nineteen ninety-seven, about seventy-eight hundred hours. And talking with Mike and Reese, they said, go ahead and, doesn't hurt to look. We did take the drive to go look at this grader on last Thursday down in Kentucky. And it is just as good as what the picture shows. And I also have reached out to two other construction equipment dealers to do some checking to see if there's anything available in this size of grader that we ran across and found. And they're still doing some looking, a couple of them, one of them's supposed to get back with me today. He found one like a two thousand and fourteen, but that's going to have the emissions on it. This is a free emission machine, which makes things better. So I did not know, I've not purchased it. I wanted to get the okay to move forward if we get from the other two equipment dealers, if they don't come up with anything that be close to what this is that we found. Have the money still appropriated in our budget, looking to upgrade, I guess, so.
Yes, I'll defer to Mike and Reese for into heavy equipment operations when I am, so thoughts on this?
Who's the nearest Volvo?
It's Rudd out of Fort Wayne, I believe. That's who we bought. We deal with Rudd right now on our old Volvo cab.
All right.
Yeah, I'm waiting to hear back from them.
I'll just be honest, I'm, I haven't had good luck with user friendly, but air that's thin. Their parts are hard to get. Back before COVID, I had a D sixteen.
Which the one we have now is a Champion, which I believe at Champion since then, about same.
Where's the Volvo's name?
Gosh, Mike, I'm not really for sure. Well, I know when we was checking into loaders, that's back when Terry was in it. He had, I believe, four loaders that they brought here that we tried out. And I believe the Volvo was second most expensive over the, I mean, it was cab, Volvo, Ace, I believe, and then Deuxon, ended up Ace. God.
Case.
I don't have a lot of experience with heavy equipment, I outsource all of our work, so I don't have an input on this. Yeah, I'm, I'm going to trust your judgment.
It, it's a very nice grader. We drove it around down there, three of us got in and drove it and, I mean, seemed very, very tight. It was come out of the, I believe it's probably come from a government, it was the federal forestry that had it. This company dealer got it from them.
How many months out of the year?
Oh, basically that's our main piece of equipment when we're blade mixing roads, summer. I mean, we use it to do our blade mixing.
See, is that the main purpose?
Yeah, I mean, if the grader goes down, we can't do our road.
Would it be practical to lease one?
Possibly could, I haven't checked into that, but right now getting graders, I mean, depending on what you want in the lease, I'm not. Yeah.
And be realistic, pay price. I mean, if you don't need it over six months out of the year, you just well off to lease a, a new one, three months, four months and always have a good piece of equipment.
Well, I mean, we can't just lease it and turn it back after four months. I mean, we do use the grader more than just three months out of the year or four months out of the year. I mean, if there's something, we're going to go down and take a hill down, we'll need a grader. You know, there's some hills we're waiting to do now, we're just waiting on the landowners to give us the okay to remove some of the hills. It's not something that is going to be here for three months and then go back to a dealer, but.
Well, that's why I asked.
Yeah, I mean, we do, we do.
You need it the year round.
Yeah, yeah, basically, yes. I mean, as far as actual work year round, there's probably four months out of the year, they just ran just about every day when we're doing our roads. And, you know, we have to burn the roads with a grader.
Did they ever use for snow removal?
We haven't had to, you know, they, yeah. I, I hope we don't have to, but if we do, it probably wouldn't take much, it's got a front push blade on it, but no. It's not, we'd have to do some fabrication probably to be able to put a V plow on the front, but.
Haven't had to use a grader since the seventies when just had the tandem or single axle trucks.
Exactly right, I mean.
Out in the blizzard.
So moving forward then, still got another quote coming in possibly, or?
Yeah, I should have two more today, one from Caterpillar, gentleman's supposed to get back with me today, but he's like, can't find graders, I did talk to White County, they just purchased a brand new one for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Wow. So what do you think is the best thing to do here? You want to wait till some of the quotes come in or you want to move forward with this one?
Well, I, I mean, I can do whatever you tell me to do. You know, our biggest thing is, you know, ours is a Champion and it's a nineteen ninety-seven. Granted, I know we're only moving up ten years. But it can break and it's getting harder to find parts for it, but I don't think we'd have any trouble finding parts for this one.
Is there, is there, what do you plan on doing with your current one then? Is it a sale value?
Well, they gave us a trade-in value on it, but I really think that it's worth more than trading it in for this. I mean, there's a possibility. I mean, there's possibility if we find something down the road, we could use it for trade-in. Or I was going to ask after this, we got some snow plows that we need to see about possibly getting rid of. Now's the time to be possibly putting snow plows out to sell that we don't use.
Right.
And I didn't know, I was going to ask about snow plows. And the other thing that's sitting in our back shed is the snow blower. If you wanted to get rid of a snow blower, now's the time to possibly think about getting rid of it. We've never used it. It's taken up shed space. And I've got to check with White County. They've sold some things on govdeals.com. And I just have to talk with Mike. The other thing is, I know we have sold things out here before in the front lot by advertising them in the paper and having sealed bids. And whoever's the high bidder gets it. But I know we've got anywhere from probably two to five snow plows that we could get rid of.
You know, we talked last year about having auctions, getting rid of some sheriff stuff and kind of cleaning up your boneyard back there. That kind of fell through. I think maybe that's something. Should maybe consider for next.
Well, I mean, the biggest thing is like on the snow plows, now would be the time to move snow plows if we're going to move snow plows.
For seasonal.
Yeah, well, let's leave this this way, Gary. Once you find out, just let us know, find out anything else from these other companies. Just let us know and, you know-
I mean, I can check into a brand new lease, but I don't know the price on that's going to be very, very high. And if you can even get them.
Well, if this is our best option, I think that's what we're looking for you to say. This is still our best option after you find out this other company-
Well, I believe this is our best option of, I mean, I've looked at a lot of graders and you're not going to find anything with that type of a price on it that's in that kind of shape that it's in. I'm not out to spend the county's money. I mean, I'm trying to save. Terry before me, him and I, we bought used stuff. We don't get much new stuff because we don't have the funding to do it. And right now, new stuff and even used stuff is very expensive.
Who was the other quote coming from?
I got one coming from Southeastern, Jeff Custer. And the other one is coming from Blake Doolan from McAllister Caterpillar. And when I talked to Blake, he said, you're not going to find anything for anywhere near what this one is.
Oh, so I would make a motion to go forward with this one, providing this is still the best option after you get the other ones in so that you can go forward with this.
How do you get this home?
Truck it. It's, I think they said it would be just around a thousand dollars to haul it. But we've not checked with like Art Went or anybody local that would drive down and get it.
That's very reasonable, trucking.
Okay, I would second that. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye to move forward with the best option?
Aye.
Aye.
What, any guidance on, do you think I need to possibly check into snow plows? I mean, my opinion, now's the time to sell a snow plow. And we can advertise it and set them out in the front driveway. I know we did that with a loader that we come from, it was Army loader. And come out real good on it, what we got on the price.
Kevin, do we need to advertise public?
It would have to.
I think it'd sell, so. Do you have to advertise it? Putting it out there, putting a sign on it's advertising it.
Well, we was going to advertise it in paper or whatever.
I am all for selling excess, equipment excess, supplies, whatever. I'm all for getting rid of excess that you don't need. So however you see fit, and now's the timing.
Yeah, I'm going to check with Mike at White County because they got some of their stuff on govdeals.com. And it's got advertisement everywhere, I believe.
Yeah, it's like nationwide.
You should get that money. Oh, what snow blower you got? That great big old Army one? What's that?
Yeah, that's one that would go like-
Probably anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, that's one that looks like it'd go in front of a locomotive.
I think so. The airport board actually expressed interest.
And I basically, I met with the airport board. He come out. And he even, he asked about our trucks for snow plows. They're probably a little bigger. I said, we could possibly work together if we had a truck set out there to plow the snow off the runway. I said, we can do whatever, but he-
He probably just needs a pickup.
I think he, yes, Kevin, he was more interested in something with a pickup, run up and down with a turntable plow. I mean, we've got some old ones that don't have turn- They would still work.
Well, I'm glad he contacted you directly and working together on that because airport manager contacted me. And it's just a lot cleaner to go straight through.
Yeah, he was here last, I think, Maurice, I think it was Friday. He was out here Friday or Wednesday.
Good deal.
And I showed him what we had and said, we can help, we can. But I think he was more interested in a pickup.
Yes.
Wow.
Anything else for Gary? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Okay, under discussion items, oh, we got a couple of emails here that maybe need some discussion. One was from Amy Hoover, Chamber of Commerce. Looking at a county holiday tree. I'll just read this short paragraph in case you did not get the email or don't recall. As a Plaski County Chamber of Commerce is interested in purchasing this holiday tree for the courthouse lawn instead of using the flagpole, what that means, she sent a picture and it showed that this, that really Christmas tree is a frame of one that they have attached to a flagpole. In the picture, we believe we can attach to the existing tree limbs on the lawn. The past, we have attempted to, we have an artificial tree on the sidewalk where the drinking fountain used to be. However, they have been small trees, comparison to the height of the courthouse, they have also blown over in the wind endlessly. We feel Plaski County deserves a majestic tree to encourage the community to shop local small businesses. I am seeking permission to purchase the tree and place it on the courthouse lawn on December first through the holiday season. We're not involved in the purchasing, giving them permission to put this size of a tree on the courthouse lawn. Discussion?
Hey, I'd second that.
Okay, here's a description of the tree here, but twenty-foot version of one.
Yeah, it sure looked nice on the email.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Just another email. See, from maintenance department. They have a lot of stuff being stored such as printers and cabinets and stored for quite a while. Talking about in the basement area, wondering about having a sale, maybe after the courthouse is complete. But wondering if we could put the stuff out at the highway department till such time, free up the space. Have two large copiers in the basement, the annex. I'd like to have recruit check them out. Also talking about putting up a small shed and talked to Larry about this. Haven't decided where. Have to have concrete poured and so on. Said, we want to put it to next to the garage or side. Highway department bring some gravel and so on, but it just can't be gravel. So talking with Larry and I think once they get a better proposal of cost and where it's going to be located, then they would probably bring this back to us. Size of a shed and that type of thing. There's a description here, so I think the main thing is moving stuff out. It's not the decision of ours. I was with the maintenance department, talking with highway department. That's done. Other than I don't, whether the council had offered, I think they just had discussion too, but given to put together a resolution about commissioners may participate by electronic means of communication. Resolution here, whether that needs action now. I think we have it action as an agenda item. Later, once there's been more discussion on it. Joint station discretion. So each committee knows what one is thinking. Do you have any comments on this resolution, Kevin?
Um, it follows the statute. It's fairly complicated, but the statute's complicated. Easier than it is to follow, so hopefully we're going to implement it. Everybody that's serving on these boards would have to have a pretty good understanding of when they can and when they can't. Couldn't be too hard to figure out. And it would be, could be useful in the future, especially if you run into another global pandemic or something like that.
Have any other discussion from the board?
Yeah, call the comment.
Sorry.
Sure can. Oh. The bear, good news. Excellent. Okay. Well, excellent. I wish I could. Okay. Yeah, well, thank-
Vicki's been spending a lot of time. Appreciate her effort. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Kyle.
Uh, Kyle. Have any updates on airport patient?
That would simplify things or is claim? All right.
Fighter or separate?
No. No, no, they're staying on, they're going to stay, we're going to, there's an agreement from ninety-one. We're just updating the agreement. It's going to be the same agreement. They own a third of it. County owns two-thirds and that. But we would feed it to the airport board so the airport board can do the day-to-day business. At a claim on a, you know, if a, one of their hangars burned down, they would make the decision by whether or not to place it. They would just, they submit a budget to town and the county. And town and the county supply two-thirds and one-third of the budget. Put that in there, their insurance premium would be included. Yes, yeah, they don't have any independent funding. They make a little money selling fuel and some hanger rental. No, their budget supplied by the county and the town.
Hey, you-
Thanks again, Kyle.
Other community comments?
Hey, make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Adjourn.
I don't have to order it. I'll go out it. Ice cream.